Hello, my name is Mike Janes. For those of you who are just joining us, this is the beginning of the Southbridge Town Council debate. We just finished up the Southbridge School Committee debate. This is put on by the Southbridge Republican Town Committee and the Southbridge Democrat Town Committees. With Jack Jovan as the vice chair. We have guest moderator Larry McDonald, which Jack will be introducing here in a moment. And I would like to thank the Cable Access Committee for all the help that they have given us in running this. I'd like to thank the candidates who have decided to participate with us. And I'd mostly would like to thank the audience, those people who are doing their due diligence and becoming informed so that they can make the right vote when it comes on June 24th. And with that, I would like to introduce you to-
Hi, Butch.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We'll have one minute to follow up. And it will go as we go to question number two. Whoever is the primary will have two minutes and follow up, et cetera, as we go forward. And then, once we get to the end of that round, we'll go into a second round if time permits. And then, once we finish those round of questions, we will go into closing statements. And each of you will have three-minute closing opportunity for closing statements. So before we get into opening statements, are there any questions? Okay? So we will start with opening statements. The draw went to Mr. Albert Vecchia. You have two minutes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Albert D. Vecchia, Jr. I am running for town council because I feel I am needed. I can contribute my five years' experience that I served on the council and my financial accounting skills. Our FY 2015 budget is $54 million. At this time, in our general fund, we have no free cash. Free cash is like a savings account. A municipality should have at least 5% in free cash. That would be $2.7 million for a rainy day. A strong municipality has 10%. That would be $5.4 million. Our water and sewer rates are going up again. 12% sewer and 3% water in July. That amounts to about an 8.5 increase in your bill. A thorough review of operating costs of the water and sewer enterprise accounts to stem the endless increases in user fees is badly needed. Though we have no dollars in our general funds, we have $2 million in water free cash and $1.75 million in sewer free cash sitting there. The $3.75 million could have been used to lower our water and sewer bills. Instead, they are going up another 8.5 in average in July. In past years, the $3.75 million in water and sewer free cash would have been used to lower the rates. Not only that, about six years ago, all the free cash and the water and sewer council rate had transferred to the general fund to pay, help lower real estate taxes. The next year, water and sewer rates went up 40% because their accounts were shortened. They borrowed from Peter the PayPal and received a backdoor tax increase. In 2003, we owed, had liabilities of $32 million. Today, FY 2013, we have liabilities of $70.5 million.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vecchia, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
The next one will be Mr. Steves.
To paraphrase Mark Twain, "Loyalty to the community always, loyalty to town government when it deserves loyalty." Councilors and any other town officials are not positions of power but are of responsibility and trust given by you, the people of Southbridge. My name is George Steves. Most people call me Gus. And I hope to earn your trust as a town councillor. And to me, that means being always an involved citizen first. Today's ideas must help tomorrow. And I invite all of you watching this to join me in giving our town the future it deserves. What does this mean to me? First off, it means communication, cooperation, and foresight. I take a long-term view of what we're doing and why. Town issues tend to be too heavily weighted toward the short-term thinking, primarily because of the annual budget. But the impact of our choices and forces influencing them do not end when the year ends, nor do they end at the town line. We need to be making Southbridge more resilient in the face of ongoing changes in economy, technology, climate, and other issues we've historically taken for granted. Doing that will require us to work together. There are a lot of good ideas out there to do that, and I want to hear yours. You never know when your idea plus someone else's may be the solution we need. We can only do them if we know about them. In many cases, our best, even only, chance to address the issues effectively requires reaching out for help while thinking, how will our decision today affect Earth, our neighbors, and our children tomorrow? Sometimes, what seems good short-term really makes things worse. Sometimes, what seems a little difficult today makes things far easier and better down the road. Sometimes, it requires action now; sometimes, it just requires waiting. If you elect me, you may find I do and say things you disagree with. That's okay. Hopefully, we'll agree on far more. Either way, I hope you'll keep sending me ideas. I hope to make decisions that will hopefully benefit all of us in the long term based on all of the information I can find.
Thank you. Mr. Pulowski.
My name is John Pulowski. I grew up in Southbridge. I attended Marion Hill High School. It sort of was at the time a regional Catholic high school. So I didn't really get to know a lot of the people in town that were about my own age. I was away for over 25 years, my mid-20s. My parents were Albert and Patricia Pulowski. I came back to town though about every, for about five weeks a year. And I really love this town. I used to like coming here, especially in the fall. And I saw changes over those years. One of the first years I left, I believe we were the all-American city. And a lot of the changes, I didn't care for. It's not just Southbridge that seemed, in this country, to be taking a step back. A lot of communities that were losing their industrial base slipped, so to speak. They weren't necessarily as nice as they were years ago. But some communities have grasped their new future and done better than others. And I believe we can investigate a little more, do what they like to call up here due diligence, and look at how some other communities are handling the changes. I remember 25, 30 years ago, Webster was sort of our twin sister, twin city or twin town. We had a very healthy rivalry with them. Then, their Main Street seemed more like ours. Our Main Street, well, isn't doing as well today. See, my time is coming short. But what I want to say is, we can learn a lot from both the mistakes and the-
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski. Your time is up. Mr. Zotos.
Hi, my name is Paul Williams Zotos. I was a former Cable Access Director in Southbridge for about 12 years. I am now retired. And I've decided to run as my second chance at running. And I learned a little bit last year when I did this. And I really enjoyed campaigning. I really enjoyed walking from door to door around Southbridge and finding out what people want and what people need. My first campaign, I was nine years old, and I campaigned for JFK. We painted the family car with his name. And I went around and I, you know, and I saw him on Main Street. And I've been involved in politics all my life. And so, it was just a natural thing. I always had it in the back of my mind that after I finished with cable that I would maybe participate. I didn't know if that was going to be a councillor or on a subcommittee or just, you know, putting up posters and doing what I usually do. But seeing what's going on and getting the feeling that, I don't know, a lot of the councillors up here weren't doing their job and they weren't really representing the town. They stopped our freedom of speech. And they seemed to just be elected and then ignore us. I really want to bring back representative government. With Joe talking about the town meeting form of government last night, it's encouraging. And, you know, we can just, we can form a finance committee right now and we can just let people talk at that podium, you know? And then, we will be pretty close to a town meeting, you know? And if that works, then we can talk about maybe going back to that open meeting type thing, you know? But right now, and when those gentlemen were speaking last night, you could see that, you know, we have done some good things and we can do more. But we got to come to the town hall and we got to watch TV and we got to participate. And everybody up here has to represent the public.
Thank you. Mr. Marino.
Good evening. My name is James J. Marino, and I'm running for town council. I've been married to Anne-Marie Dozen for 49 wonderful years. I have two sons, Jamie, who worked at Commerce, and Vince, a football coach. I have three grandchildren, Jake, Paige, and Josh. Occupation, a barber for about 50, 55 years on a corner of Elman Dresser. Graduated from Mary Wells, New England School of Barbering. Served two years in the service, 1954, 1956. Early '60s, I served on the planning board, board of, in the recreation department. Elected a town council in 1979 and served about 12 to 14 years. I was elected to the school committee in 1985 to 1988. In 1981, I initiated the elderly housing project at Dresser Park. We had 13 councillors at that time, and we were looking for a house for the, housing for the elderly. And the town manager and the town council at that time wanted to put that housing at the depot or at the place in the back of the fire department. And I suggested that we put it in the back of Dresser Park. And we rallied around the town. The town came to together. We got the state senator, state rep, on our side, and we got the housing project right at Dresser Park. I always fought the town manager when I had to, and I, always fighting for the taxpayer. In 1987, I was chairman of the school building committee that renovated Mary Wells-
I'm sorry, Mr. Marino, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Estrada.
Good evening, citizens of Southbridge. My name is Michael Miguel Estrada. I don't want to introduce a candidate on the position, but I want a friend who brought into 25 years of experience as public service. And my experience in public service be very prevalent for what the program, the people. I have three years' experience for my family in Southbridge. I love Southbridge. It's my time. I have, I want, I want many you are believing. Lack of job, lack, a good idea, I'm hopeless. That's why I'm here today, to be your voice and to make the difference. Day-to-day, I'm walk the street, I walk door to door, talk to the people. And the people, I need one person of difference in the city. One people work day-to-day for the people. My point, eh? A difference, it's a good idea. More job, more housing. It's my point. Michael Estrada, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Just to go over the rules just before we get into the questions where the heart of the debate lies, I just want to emphasize that, again, the primary responder on the question is going to have two minutes, and then the rebuttal will be one minute from each of the candidates. The light system is set up. It'll be green for the opening, and then when you have 15 seconds left, it'll turn yellow. And then, when your time is up, it'll turn red, and the base, basically, debate is cut off. Also, want to point out that if a candidate mentions another candidate during the debate, at the moderator's discretion will allow a one-minute rebuttal from the person who's named to answer anything that is directed to a specific candidate. So with that, we'll go on to question number one. We're going to start in the same order we did the opening remarks. We'll start with Mr. Apple Vecchia. Albert Vecchia, sorry. And the first question is, "The townspeople will be voting regarding the proposal to revert to a town meeting form of government. What do you believe is the best form of government for Southbridge and why?"
I believe that the town government we have right now is the best form of government. That's why I'm running for town council. It has central representation, form of government. And you have to remember that at every election, anywhere from 1,700 to 3,500 people go out and pick the town councillors. So you might as well say that, that's like a town meeting. That's their town meeting once a year. They go out and 2,500 people vote who they want to put in. Then they can take them out if they don't like them. Going back the old way, I'm not in agreement with that at all, because I think there'll only be special interests voting there. And you'll only get about 200 people. And at times, they'll be able to push things through that shouldn't be pushed through. We are a city form of government, even though we're designated as a town of Southbridge. Today, we have liabilities of $70 million. In 2003, we had liabilities of $32 million. I don't think we should be paying attention to the money we owe and getting receipts in. And I don't think we should go back. Plus, I don't think it serves its purpose. And since 1974, we had a lot of great town councillors serve on here. One of my best friends, Roger Duquette, served on here. He's gone. I don't think it's right for him and anybody else that served on the council. Mike Colganese started the charter commission. Lenny DiGigorio was part of the charter commission. They believed in this form of government. And I believe in this form of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steves.
To be clear, I've always liked the concept of town meeting. However, I send, and I signed the petition to encourage the debate on this issue, but I dislike what the petition itself says. And I think we should vote no on the question as it now exists. I believe that if we do, and it passes by a narrow margin, or, sorry, if it was rejected by a narrow margin, I would advocate for sending it to a charter commission to actually look at the alternatives. I have no problem with town council. I have no problem with open meeting. I'm not sure an open meeting would work as well as a representative if we choose to do that, go that route. But we need to look at all of the options and really see what would be most suitable for Southbridge's population, its demographics, the way things are structured now as far as the budget and things like that go. Even if the vote is lopsidedly no, however, the issue that sparked the petition is a real one and must not be allowed to vanish after June 24th. And that ties directly to one of my other campaign issues, which is communication.
Thank you. Mr. Pulowski.
My belief is if the town councillors were more willing to have the backbone, let's say, and I'm not saying that they don't have backbone, but sometimes, our town managers have a tendency to become unelected mayors. And for that reason, I've learned to not really appreciate the current form of government this town has. Now, you may ask, why am I running for town council? Well, the reason I'm running for town council is I believe, despite the fact that I believe our town would be better represented with a town meeting form of government, by being up here, the very things I think are a problem, the lack of communication, the disrespect to people when they go up to the podium, not holding town managers accountable, that I would be able, at least from up here, to do what I could also do at town meeting.
Thank you. Your time is up, Mr. Pulowski. Mr. Zotos.
Yeah, I enjoyed a town council for the last 15 years, and I saw it up close. And, you know, I've seen the good and the bad of it. I'm not afraid of going back to the selectmen form of government. I'd be more than willing to participate in that also. We're looking for honest people. We're looking for people who are willing to go out into the community and to listen to what people have to say, because everywhere I go, people are talking about either lowering the taxes or holding them. And how our water rates got so high, I don't understand. I'll leave that to Apple to explain it, how it got so high. I believe them. But I'm willing to go along with whatever the public wants. I can't wait till the 24th to see that answer. So I will do whatever the public wants, and I will follow their lead, because I listen to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Marino.
Well, there's no doubt in my mind that the town meeting, selectmen form of government is the best time for the town of Southbridge. We're a small town of about 15, maybe 15,500 people. And it gives the people a better shot at having more say and a vote in all the major issues. With this form of government, we don't have that. And too many times, our town council have let us down. Now, people talk about town meetings being stacked. Well, we've seen where people came before the town council and got what they wanted, and it only took five votes, okay, compared to a town meeting where you have to convince 2, 3, maybe 400 people. And the main purpose of our petition is to get the people involved, unite the town of Southbridge.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marino. Your time's up. Mr. Estrada.
My point is that return to the past. If we the one today, 1950, few were made a decision for us. The 21st century, there's no time to stop and start again. It's buried there. Of course, there's the adjustment and the change, but not the change, the former government. Before the government, now the city is this government. They change the people, who the government asked and who have the lost passion for the people, for the people of the position they. Or the day, yesterday, told the people, and I meant told the question, you change the town board meeting? He said, why? He said, why?
I'm sorry, Mr. Estrada, your time's up. Now move to question number two. And the primary responder on this question is going to be Mr. Steves, who has two minutes, and the rest will have one minute to follow up. If you need me to read the question at any time, please just let me know, and I will. Question number two is, "There is much disagreement over the sighting of a Cumberland Farms store at the old Friendly Ice Cream site. What is your opinion?"
Personally, I think that we have, at this point, we have too many gas stations, we have too many convenience stores. We need to use that property for something that will actually add to what our economic base is. Personally, I'd like to see some sort of a restaurant, an ethnic, personally, like, I like Indian personally, or a bookstore of some sort, something that we can actually, that will actually draw somebody to downtown. We don't need the environmental issues that the gas station is likely to create. And I have actually already made those points clear to the planning board and at the Conservation Commission, which I currently sit on. And I think that in the long term, for a variety of different reasons, we need to be getting away from gasoline, we need to be promoting alternative energies, public transit, and those kinds of things. And I think that in the long run, a facility down there of this nature will end up just being an environmental mess. We already have seen that all of the other gas stations in town except one, which is the most recent one, have already been on the state's DEP hazardous waste cleanup list. And I see no reason to assume that this one will not in time. So we need to, I think we need to prevent something like this from happening and use that space for something more useful for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Pulowski.
I have some concerns. I believe in the free enterprise system, but being right on Main Street, one of the things that I hear from people that I know would say down in the Cape, that surprised them in Southbridge, something they say about our town is we have a beautiful downtown. And we do. It's, we can do a lot with that. I think people come in, like, we could have an old Southbridge Village, maybe. But to have a Cumberland Farms, that's going to be, not a black eye on our Main Street, let's just say, an attractive pimple. And some things I'm particularly concerned about, big old 7,500-gallon gas trucks trying to negotiate that turn. I'm also concerned, as Mr. Steves correctly pointed out, all gas tanks eventually seem to leak. Well, he didn't say it exactly like that, but that's been the case in this town. We have nuisance brook behind there. Well, this time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski. Your time is up. Mr. Zotos.
Yeah, it's very hard to say we don't want a business coming to town. I understand that. And, but I haven't met anybody that really wants this gas station. But I don't want to say no to a great business like Cumberland Farms. I've seen the one in Dudley, and I've seen the one in Sturbridge. They're really nice. If they would work with us, if they'd be willing to sit down, roll up their sleeves, and realize that a lot of things didn't work in Southbridge. A big hotel didn't work, you know? A big, two big nightclubs didn't work. So I think the people know what they want. And if we could convince them of a better location, or maybe with all that land, a restaurant and a gas station, it would have a shot. There's a good chance that all it's going to sell is Lotto tickets, cigarettes, and beef jerky, you know? And so, we don't want that. We want both. And I would fight for that.
Thank you. Mr. Marino.
Well, we're not against businesses coming into Southbridge, but you got to put the right business in the right location. And that location is not a good place to put a gas station. For many years now, we've always been hearing about the planning board and keeping in line with our buildings downtown and making it look like an historical downtown, okay? And I've heard many, for many years at the barber shop, when we used to have tourists coming in through, that we had a beautiful downtown, okay? Now, the gas station is going to take away from that. The traffic is going to be horrific, okay? And it's just no place for it. It was, I was very disappointed with the planning board voting for that. I spoke at the planning board meeting against it, as many other people did, but they didn't listen. And I think it's going to hurt the downtown.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marino. Mr. Estrada.
My point is that the building, the Friendly, is a good building, but not for the gas station. It's a bad idea. It's dangerous. Well, much better, well, move the gas station outside the city. Well, much better, well, move the gas station outside the citizen. The Main Street is a street of history. Check the building, the Main Street. All the building, the good and long history. My point is move the, move the gas station the other place.
Thank you. Mr. Vecchia?
See, this is our problem. We're always negative about anything, new businesses. We're afraid of new businesses come to town. If it's done right, it will be good for downtown. I know a lot of major cities and small towns that have gas stations and Cumberland Farms or 7-Elevens in their downtown area. If it's done right, if it's pretty, and we have a great planning board, and I commend the planning board, because they take a lot of crap from people, okay? And if it's done right, it should go down there. We need the dollars for taxes, and it might be very good for us. So that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. That concludes question two. We'll move to question three. In question three, Mr. Palowski will be the primary responder, and he'll have two minutes. Our landfill is filling quickly. What ideas do you have for it once it has been capped?
Well, it is, it is filling quickly, and part of the reason is the daily cover. It isn't counted towards the 400, 5,000 tons a year. They now want to bring in a carcinogenic material. I don't think landfills are appropriate for at least 40 to 60 years after closure because of the toxins that emanate from them. They have to be monitored. It could be covered perhaps with solar cells, or we can continue to capture the gas that emits from it. But I suspect that if we're going to be consistent with the laws and the rest of the industrialized world, we may have to, or the state may have to, or the federal government may have to deconstruct that landfill. That's what they're doing in Wales, especially when they're near water. It's already violating the water table. You know, scripture says that faith can move mountains. I think in this case, the EPAs may have to move that mountain. It's a, it's really more of a mess than people realize. Our town, over the last generation, has become, we're number one in something in this state. We're in the top 1% of asthma. That was not the case 30 years ago. It certainly is not only because of the landfill, but that's contributing to the problem, as is our sewer plant. But back to the question, what should we do after it's covered? We should ensure that it does as less damage to the citizens and health of the people of Southbridge, Sturbridge, and Charlton. And maybe if we bring the top down, it won't be as much of a threat to aviation.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. Zotos?
I've said this before at the podium and at subcommittee meetings, we should start phasing it out right now. I think six states can bring things in now, unregulated. I think we should cut that down to three states this year, just the three states that surround us. And then the next year, I'd like to phase out the cities, only towns our size, or maybe 50,000 people to our size. But I wouldn't want, in two years, I would want to stop Springfield, Hartford, or Worcester, or anyplace like that. We haven't saved any money. We don't know what we're going to do when it closes. And I was really offended when, because, you know, we had a disaster up there last year, and we had one last April. It's sliding. It's sliding into Charlton, and Cassella laughed. It laughed at the fine, and I don't like that. I want to, I want to get control of this landfill and do best, what's best for Southbridge, not for Cassella.
Thank you. Mr. Marino?
Well, I don't think we can do much as long as they get the contract. And all I can say is that when the contract goes out, and if the town council has a say on that, or just don't extend any more site assignments to them, let the landfill phase out, and so we don't have to be made a garbage city anymore. And we haven't gotten that much money from that landfill. I think we get, what, $2.4 million from it, which is peanuts, okay? And for the trouble that it's given us, okay? I would be in favor of just closing it out, and whatever the process is after that, let it be.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Mr. Estrada?
My point is that a mistake to expand the laughing. This area is quite populated. And health of the city has been, would be at stake. I would never be agree with that ideas. We both might find other alternative of, they cannot cope to the story, or disposing of the garbage, disposing of the recycle. How many year life the laughing, how many year life this city? My point is no more spending the laugh.
My first question was going to be, the landfill might last another 10 years, is that correct? Nobody's saying anything, but here's the point. We get $2.5 million from Cassella a year because we built the Industrial Park Road, and they also paid for the Industrial Park Road. And if we hadn't built the Industrial Park Road, they would have sued us, okay? I know, because I casted the side and vote to build the Industrial Park Road. That $2.5 million a year we get, Mr. Marino says it isn't much money, but for, rule of thumbs, for every 1%, it's a, it's a million dollars. It's $100,000, sorry. For every 1%, it's $100,000. So $2.5 million is about 25%, rounded to 23%. With the same stuff that we are getting, your taxes would be 23% more if we weren't getting that $2.5 million. Or we'd have to cut costs, okay? Am I all done?
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steves?
Honestly, what to do then, as far as when the landfill closes, is something that we need to be more concerned about, what we're going to do between now and whatever that deadline is. As I think we both know, or if you've been following it, Cassella is proposing expansion to use a couple of small parcels and Bearford Road itself. And I don't think we should be doing expansion, especially beyond Commercial Drive. They've talked, they've talked about two different things. And I would, the current project, the only way I would approve any such expansion is if it restricts those areas to Southbridge's own trash, and maybe the immediately surrounding towns, because we need to use that space to buy ourselves time to figure out some way to get off of trash entirely. We do need to close off that landfill. It has to end, and it has to end soon. The money is becoming an addiction, and at some point, we are going to get to the point where we run out of money and we have nothing planned yet to deal with it.
Thank you. That concludes question three. Moving to question four, primary responder will be Mr. Zotos. Water and sewer rates have escalated significantly over the past several years. Do you think rates should continue to increase, or do you have another plan?
I always have another plan. I always have an answer. I, you know, I remember the old days before I came home, and we seemed to do just fine. We, you know, I used to, we go on hikes once a year up to Cat Rock, and I like to look at the reservoirs, and I like to look at Hatchet and our reservoirs. And I go up to Cat Rock, and I realize how gorgeous it is up there, and how lucky we are to have reservoirs of our own. And I was told we can build a fourth reservoir. There's one more valley, and we can actually build another reservoir. I don't know any town that's building reservoirs. And more water goes over our dam than we can drink, you know? So my plan is, I think we should charge Sturbridge a little more, I think we should charge Charlton a little more, the Mass Pike, all that enterprise that's out of town. And by doing that, we should lower the local rates. Seniors should get a lower rate, you know? We could hold them the same for a little while, and, you know, we built that infrastructure. Charlton didn't build the infrastructure. Sturbridge didn't build the infrastructure. The Mass Pike, I mean, we should be able to drive free on the Mass Pike for all the water we're bringing up there, you know? And they don't, they don't, they don't let us do that either. So there's a lot of things we can do. We have water. I would love to bottle it. I think we're pretty good at making glass in Southbridge. There's got to be some people around who remember how to make glass. And if we put our water in our glass bottle with a picture of that reservoir up there, it'll sell better than all the water around here. And, you know, we could do really well. Let's get into thinking about the future and a real enterprise, you know? We have water, but we chose to put a chemical in our water so we could send it out through lead, lead line pipes, and, you know, and that, and that lead is leaching into our water, and that's wrong. So I've got a lot of ideas, and I'll talk about that at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marino?
Well, one of the main concerns of the taxpayers is water and sewer rate. And I really don't know what we can do about it, but I think that when the contracts come up, I think that we have to take a good look at them and maybe look around for another contractor, go out to forbid. I don't think this contract has gone out for bids in the last, well, every time it was up. So I think that sometimes when you mention going out for bids and everything, it shakes up the contractors a little bit, and then maybe that might help, but right now, I just think that we have to wait and see what we can do. Right now, I'm not sure what we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Estrada?
My point is check the contract, or check the contract for real, for my head. The water high rate, I might check, which is very, very hard problem. I might check, my first point, they check the contract, check very hard, they just check the water. For my points? Second point, so yeah, business, check the business for change the water.
Thank you. Mr. Vecchia?
Well, one of the platforms I'm running on is a thorough review of operating costs of a water and sewer enterprise accounts to stem the endless increases in user fees is badly needed. I think we can cut costs. I was on the council for five years. It was either 2000 or 2010 that water, new water contract came up, and a new sewer contract came up. I was the only councillor that voted against those two contracts, because I thought we were giving away too much money. On the other hand, I've got the sewer rates for Sturbridge, I got the sewer rates for Boston, I got the sewer rates for Sturbridge, and also the water rates. Our rates are not bad compared to theirs. It's just that our rates have gone sky high. They keep on going up and going up, and we're not a rich town, like some of these towns are. One of the first things I would do, I would look at the contract, and I was trying to cut, I would try and cut costs.
Thank you, Mr. Vecchia. Your time's up. Mr. Steves?
I have a potential way to reduce those costs, but I don't know if it'll work. I'd like to compare the actual cost benefit of having Veolia and Whitewater manage our systems, which we actually own, as I understand it, to recreating a town water and sewer department. Take a look at the costs there, see which would be better for us. I think we can also come up with a list of unfunded state mandates, because one of the key issues is that they are, there are mandates there to deal with nutrients going into the river that the wastewater treatment plant needs to address, and they're very expensive. There's also issues with repairing the facilities down there that are seriously deteriorating. You also have the issue of repairing the dams up at the, up at the reservoirs that we need to deal with. We need to deal with all of these things, because this is ultimately a health issue in the long run, and it's what makes, one of the things that makes our community actually function. But if we can come up with that list of unfunded state mandates and what they cost us, they might be able to give us ammo for more state aid to change the law and get rid of some of these mandates, or at least make them less expensive, or get more grants, in other words, to fund them.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Palowski?
Being the last speaker on this, I have the benefit of listening to all these geniuses up here with me, some great ideas. Yes, we can sell more of this water to our neighboring towns. Mr. Zotos's idea of providing clean water, because a lot of people, they may not like our water coming out of the spigot, but it's very good up there in the reservoirs. It's a, it's really good water. And we're also selling our processed sewage water to the Millennium Power Plant. I don't know if we can get more money for that, if that's possible. It's something we should look at. We, some we, you know, I'm not going to get votes by telling people this, but we really ought to start replacing our water lines a little bit at a time. I'd love to see local people do it, a water department, our local water people doing it, jobs for people in this town. But let's find the lead pipes, let's replace them first. I understand we even have some wood pipes out there in a few places. Let's replace that and create some jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Your time's up, I'm sorry. That takes care of question number four. We'll move on to question number five. And the primary responder for this question is going to be Mr. Marino with two minutes. Do you support the building of a new fire station? Why or why not?
Well, not a new fire station, but I would support a renovation of the old fire station. And I think why I say that is that you're keeping the building with the downtown structures of the other building. And this is what small towns do. And I would support renovations. I would knock down the last two bays, make them wide enough for the big trucks, and then whatever has to be done to make the fire station top shelf, do it. If it takes a couple of million dollars, do it. But I don't think at this time, we can afford a $10 million or $15 million fire station. And we could do something with the park, we could take the back part of the park, there's room enough for parking in there back there, because you're going to need parking for the firemen. So I like to keep the building in line with the rest of the buildings downtown, but I would support renovations of the fire department.
Thank you. Mr. Estrada?
My point is much better the renovation, the fire station. How many cost the new station? Six, four, three billion? This money used for the people. The fire station now is a history building, is a history citizen, is a history... My point is, why using money for new building or for fire station? Using the money for the people. Much better the renovation, the building, more, more towards the firemen, more benefits for the firemen. It's much better. Okay? Lose six, eight million dollar in construction, you save the money for the building. No, you save the money for the people. It's my point.
Thank you. Mr. Vecchia?
In 2003, we had liabilities on our balance sheet of $32 million. Today, FY 2013, we have liabilities of $70.5 million. That's $38.5 million, more than double than we had 10 years ago. So I don't think we should keep on spending money and having our liabilities increasing. The fire station, how much can we get from the federal grants and state grants, okay? How many years is it going to be bonded for? 30 years, 20 years? Who's going to ask these questions? So until I had answers on this, I would say we should refurbish it, but we shouldn't build a new fire station. We're spending too much money. And that's one of the reasons why we should stay a city farm of government and keep this government that we have, because I don't think we should be going to town meetings with stuff like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Steves?
That really depends partly in what the project itself calls for. I mean, we haven't actually seen a proposal. We know that the current site doesn't fit the vehicles that they use, and it's kind of dangerous to get trucks in and out of. Long term, it's probably necessary, and, but I think we need to do some serious homework, bring in ideas from the community out there. There are ideas out there to find good ways to fund it. I don't know if federal and state grants, they've been drying up, so I'm not sure they're necessarily going to help us a whole lot. necessarily going to help us a whole lot. But I think we can find some way to do it. The issue is doing our homework in advance so that we make sure that we do it right, we do some creative financing, maybe try to find some way, kind of like what we did to build the high school, so it doesn't end up raising our taxes in any huge majority. And we kind of need to bite the bullet and figure out how we're going to do it. It's an issue whether we need it, because we do.
Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
I'm glad Mr. Steves mentioned the high school, because it's an excellent example, I believe, of where a town meeting would serve the town better. A lot of us wanted a new high school, but I think the majority did not like where they put it. And if we had a town meeting, we could discuss these things. Like, I don't like, I don't like where I hear they're talking about putting a fire station. But I'd love to see a new fire station. I also think the current fire station could be a little fire museum. We could put Tiger Number Seven there. We could dress some of our firemen in circa 1850, 1860, 1870. Let them decide. And try to bring in people from Sturbridge, come see our nice fire station, because a lot of people like that sort of thing. So, we can keep our fire station going, not create as much revenue, but bring in people into town. And I personally, I like the idea of a new fire station, because I understand that they're not be able to give 100% because there isn't enough room for all their trucks.
Thank you. Mr. Zodos?
I support the fire station. I support the firemen. I think it's a real pride at Southbridge that we have such a beautiful fire station. We've been kicking the can down the road about renovating it. We should renovate it regardless if we build a new one or not, that the building needs renovation, that those gentlemen deserve a nice place to be. It makes money. We're, you know, we're a hospital town, we've got a great ambulance service. And so, an old idea that, I don't know what happened to it, but we had smaller fire stations around the town. The AO had its own fire station. There used to be a fire station down the Globe. Since we closed the fire station down the Globe, I think the Globe has burned down three times. Why did we close that, why did we close that fire station? I mean, there was three fires there. Used to be a fire station right across the street, but we closed it, because somebody would thought it would save money, but those fires cost us money, and we've never had industry in that park down there ever since those fires.
Thank you.
So, let's think up a new idea.
Sorry, your time's up, Mr. Zodos. That takes care of question number five. Moving to question number six, the end of round one. Two-minute primary response will be by Mr. Estrada. What is the single most important issue facing the town of Southbridge today? And if you were elected, what would you do regarding that issue?
My point is the more important issues this time is education. My point about education is that the real problem is the administration. But the administration is not live long in the teaching. There's enough feeling, it's problems about the teacher, and it's the good ideas, good I go back and claim that we, dear teacher, have heard of the administration. Our administration would be sure, or children deserve, and that there will be a future in the city. Day to day, talk the people, and feedback, the feeling, the problem, the administration on the school. The children, the future of the city, think, good student, good teacher. My point, the first day, the town council, I made one appointment, the administration of the school. Change, change the people, change the administration of the school is very, very, very important. That's my point.
That's it. Thank you. Mr. Vecchia?
Well, it's not just a single issue. It's like your body. You can have 100 things wrong with your body, okay? To begin with, we need to hire a new town manager and a good one, okay? And we've had several good ones. We also have to bring in new business into Southbridge. We have to get business at the industrial park road. We probably are going to need to hire somebody to do this for us. We have to get the grades in the sewer system better. So, it's not just one single issue to move the town forward. But I think the main thing, that we should all keep a positive attitude to move forward and stop this negativity about going back to the other form of government, and everybody seems to be complaining about a lot of things. Let's not complain. Let's be happy, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vecchia. Mr. Steves?
I actually see that there's two key issues. One is a long-term one, which is building an economy that's environmentally sound and resilient, and that's based on colleges and locally grown small businesses. But on an immediate term level, it's an issue of dealing with the communication breakdown that we see throughout town. I would like to see us do permanent non-voting liaisons between various boards, like the school committee and the town council, the various boards that are related to each other, like planning and zoning and conservation. Create a communication subcommittee for the town council to make better use of technology, media, and other things. Have regular all-boards meetings between the town, between the various town boards to share ideas and issues at least two or three times a year. Have ambassadors to our neighboring communities, because we need to get, to work with them for environmental and a variety, and economic and a variety of other reasons. And personally, I'll have office hours in various locations to get some ideas and to actually talk to people, and, because the ideas that we have that are in this community of 17,000 are what are going to make us happen.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Palowski?
We have, as I sat here, I thought of half different answers. We have a lot of moderate-sized problems. I personally think, the one I'm going to bring up, is that we have this concept that by consolidating power and bringing in some quasi-savior, that a government bureaucrat is going to solve the problems. All I've seen these town managers do is kind of bury the problems under the rug and worry about the next quarter or the next annual budget. What we need to do is have a better dialogue between the citizens and the town government. You know, if it doesn't work, we'll have only ourselves to blame. And decentralize the town government and work on some of our issues. I think, one of them I mentioned earlier, our water system. We need better pipes. And another problem, I'd be running for school committee if I thought it was the biggest problem, our schools. We need to support our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. I'm sorry, your time's up. Mr. Zodos?
Yes, we have to be real careful in picking a new town manager. We're going to have to really look at his resumes, and look at his resume and make a decision on hiring a manager that's done it before, that's brought economic development to the town, and has turned the town around. We can't just hope somebody can do it. We've got to find a manager, and on his resume, it has to say that he has turned the town around. And we've got to look at our economic development department and evaluate it, and we need to bring in a real pro, again, someone who's done this in Massachusetts, knows Massachusetts' businesses and the future, and a real new economic development person working with a new town manager, both with track records that have done it before, will do it again, and they will do it here.
Thank you. Mr. Marino?
Well, everybody talks about a new town manager, but we've had town managers for 40 years, and they haven't done anything. Look at downtown. Businesses have not closed up, but they've left Southbridge. They've gone to Sturbridge, they've gone to Charlton, they've gone to Dudley. These are Southbridge businesses, people that born and brought up in Southbridge, and they took their businesses out, because they couldn't get along with the town manager. And that's no lie. So, the town manager is the biggest fault. When we had the Board of Selectmen, you could talk to them people, okay? All the town managers does, come in here, uses us as a stepping stone, gets his big salary, and the first thing he does is look for another job at the Cape. What we got to start doing is working together for jobs, like everybody else in the country, but, and reduce our taxes or stabilize them.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Thank you. That's the end of round one and question six. We have time for one more question, and then we'll move to the closing remarks. We're back at the beginning of the lineup. This question, the primary responder is going to be Mr. Vecchia. Do you believe absentee landlords are a problem in Southbridge? And if so, do you have any solutions to the problem?
They're a big problem in Southbridge. Finally, some of the buildings have been going down, like the one that's on River Street. They finally took those buildings down. We should, absentee landlords, we should take the properties if they're going to be absentee, and we should sell them off. Or we should also find them. We should make it tougher with absentee landlords, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vecchia. Mr. Steves?
Yeah, I think they generally are. I think one of the things that we see is that you look at, especially down on Main Street and Central, you see a lot of sort of vacant buildings that could have used paint about 10 years ago. And I like Webster's approach to the idea of using billboards to kind of shame them into doing the right thing. But I also think we can also help by providing them some sort of incentives to do that. Maybe we can work with them to give them a short tax break, not a long-term, maybe a year or two, to get them to fund, actually put some money into maintaining their properties. I think part of the problem is a lot of the fact that in these cases, you see banks from California or Canada, or who knows where, actually owning some of these properties. And I would love to see if there's some way we can figure out a way to put them into local hands, although I'll admit I don't know how to do that at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
Well, this isn't going to gain me any votes either, but I think a apartment building with more than four units is not owner-occupied, that we should consider having a dual tax rate, charge them a little more. Because I, attending board of health meetings, our health director, a lot of people say he's going to spend a lot of time in the landfill, he's got to spend a lot of time being an assistant landlord. And this is a way of financing or funding that. And maybe some of that money could be used towards sprucing some of these places up. Not grants, but very low-interest loans, or no-interest loans, but in paint, you know, paint. When I was a kid, I had a choice of two or three places I could go for a summer job. I got, there are kids now in this town with no degrees from a community college, and they can't find a summer work. I'm all for getting summer jobs for our kids, teach a work ethic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zodos?
I don't think we should demonize our landlords. We've just come, we're just trying to work our way out of a real depression that the whole country went through. I think it hit Southbridge two years before it hit the country, and I think it's still here, even though the rest of the country seems to be doing a little better. I think it's a combination of some of these landlords aren't keeping up their apartments, though they've gotten rent for 40, 50 years, and have done absolutely no work to the building. That's a problem. But again, they're not inspected, and there are no rules. People can do anything they want. I see porches gone from buildings. I see people putting tarps on roofs, and that's okay, you know? So, we're not doing our job, and the landlords are getting away with things, but I wouldn't want to demonize them, because, you know, that is money. But we do need housing, and we need housing for everybody, not just for everybody who can build a house.
Thank you. Mr. Marino?
Well, absentee landlords are a big problem. They get federal grants, and they don't do nothing with their buildings, okay? And you make out a check, and the check goes to Florida or anywhere around Boston, and they don't keep up their properties. I think that we should have the building inspector, the health inspector, go to these places and condemn them, and put a fine on them, put a time limit on them that they have to fix them, and if they don't fix them, the town takes it over and resell them. But absentee landlords are a big problem, and we've got to do something about it, and we've got to change the image of Southbridge. And I think that's a good start.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Mr. Estrada?
My point is the very hard problems on the building. Two problems. My first point is the landlord, I may talk the landlord, but more cleaning your room, more cleaning the building. Check the central street, check the, check the hamilton, check the main street. How many building empty? My point is, I have development plan with private enterprise. To the government no longer have the ability sustain other people. We can build different types of company, we've got incentive for leave the citizen, leave for more job. Or another good idea is to teach people that like working to own business, so as a leave the government.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. I'm sorry, your time's up. That concludes the questions. We'll now move to our closing statements. We will do the closing statements in the same order that we did the opening statements, so we'll start with three minutes with Mr. Vecchia.
Thank you very much. In FY 2003, our revenues from collecting real estate taxes was $9.4 million. In FY 2013, 10 years later, our revenues from collecting real estate taxes is $16.3 million. In 10 years, our receipts from real estate taxes has gone up 73%, 6.9 million. But our taxes have not gone down, only risen and risen. You need somebody on the council who understands these figures, somebody who can and has and will serve as your watchdog. I had proved it in the five years I served on the council, being your watchdog. Also, I can also make a major contribution in the area of education. As a former chairman of the Education and Human Services Subcommittee, I demonstrated my ability to work with the school committee on a basis of mutual trust and respect. The year I was the chairman, which was 2002, I called 26 subcommittee meetings because the town council and the school committee was not getting along. I'm a graduate of Southbridge High School. I attended Mary Wells High School. I'm a proud graduate. I think we have to put a cap on spending. We need to tighten our belts, and I think I'm a necessity on the council this year. You have a lot of new members, and you have a few old members, and I think I'd be a good measure. I can work with the councillors. I can work with Sean Moriarty. I can work with Denise Clements. I think I am needed on the council, and I would appreciate your vote for Albert D. Vecchia Jr. And I would like to thank Butch McDonald, Bob Chinerzki, Kevin Crystal, Jack Jovan, Mr. James, Cable TV, the people in the audience for being here tonight, and thank you. I really enjoyed myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vecchia. Mr. Steves?
We have many issues to address, and the only way to do so effectively is with communication, cooperation, and foresight. Be it the ballot question, town manager search, economic, Renaissance, schools, taxes, or any number of other things, the real solutions must come from all of us working together. As a people, we have the skills and creativity to generate in our towns, not undeserved negative reputation, and make Southbridge a vibrant, ecologically and economically healthy, resilient place we'd be proud to hand to future generations. There were so many different issues that we never really got the chance to talk about tonight. I'll just rattle off a few of them. One of the things I think, as far as that process of economic resilience is, I would like to see us expand local food production. We need to get involved in bringing some of this stuff back to our community because of the cost of oil and gas and various other environmental issues. I would like to see us expand transit in town to make it kind of a local, small-scale, maybe, who knows, 12-passenger van system running around town and connecting us to the nearby communities. I'd like to see us finish the rail trail. I'd like to see us prioritize development of existing locations that are currently vacant, and there's unfortunately too many of them, downtown buildings and lots, while discouraging expansion as much as possible. as much as possible into the areas that are still open, fields and forests and those kinds of things, because we'll need them in the future for the environmental and agricultural benefits that they could provide. I would like to see a one way to reduce the impact of taxes and help keep some of the money in our community and encourage more people to get involved, is I'd like to see a tax work-off system that's kind of like the one that the seniors have, but open to anyone who's willing to volunteer in ways that serve the community. One of the ways that I'd love to see that happen is have people, bring people together who can teach the kinds of skills that I've mentioned, you know, all kinds of things that we need going forward over the course of a long period of time, have them teach it to other Southbridgeans and maybe get a tax write-off for doing so. In general, I am not a native Southbridgean, I've been here about seven years, but I've come to, I've come to love this community and the places, the people, the forests, the rivers, all that other stuff. And I would really like to see it become the kind of urban community that it has, that has the potential to be. I'm in a long-term, stable, and happy relationship with Maureen, who describes herself as a fourth-generation Southbridgean, and we live in the home that her grandfather, late Senator and Postmaster Paul Benoit built in 1950s. I hope you'll give me the chance to work for our community the way your grandparents supported him. And if you had, a lot of the other issues that we didn't get a chance to talk about, you can check out my Facebook page, which is Steves for Southbridge on Facebook.com, or by emailing me at Gus.Steves@gmail.com. And I would appreciate your vote on June 24th. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Steves. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you. I, I would like to thank all the people that took the time to come here, the folks that worked hard to give us a opportunity to express ourselves here. In some years, we haven't always had, had debates in these last seven years anyway that I've been here. There's a lot we can do in this town. What can I do up here that I can't do from the other side of the dais? Well, I think one of the problems is we have a tendency to sweep things under the rug. And sometimes that makes sense, you know, we don't want to scare people unnecessarily. But there are a lot of places in this town that need to be cleaned up. One of them is under the Department of Public Works. I like the idea of bringing in, I've discussed it with the school. I am not a town counselor, so I don't really have any gravitas with them, but I've discussed with people at the University of Massachusetts up in Dartmouth. They have a civil engineering program that cleans things up. My dad used to be a teacher at the pre-vocational program in town. They would do things like put up Christmas decorations, fix things here and there. I'd love to see a civil engineering program over down by the Quinsigamet Program. Perhaps we can get some of these really expensive cleanups done on, well, much less expensively. I, like I said, I think we need to start doing something about our, our water pipes, creates some jobs in the community. I think a lot of people are getting old, the baby boomers are getting older. This is not my idea, I've heard it from one of the other candidates here, but we need more housing for the elderly, and it's time to start looking now for a place to have such a project. I, yes, I am in favor of having an open meeting, open town meetings, but if we don't, I'm still going to give 110% up here. I served on a nuclear sub for four years, and a lot of the things people ask, where did you learn about the chemistry of, you obviously know a little bit about more than the average person about trash? Well, I didn't work for a trash company on a submarine. I learned what our limits were. We'd test our air every 15 minutes. And I saw there are places in this town where the hydrogen sulfide is so high that if we were on the submarine, we would have succumbed to the periscope depth and ventilated the sub. We can't ventilate, so we need to use preventive measures to reduce the hydrogen sulfide in our air. And it's really not that expensive. We, I learned a lot of chemistry from Harry McMahon. He used to teach at St. Mary's in 7th grade. I see my time's up, but there's a lot this town can do. There isn't a problem that doesn't have a solution. We have a lot of good minds in this town, and I think we can work together, and I believe the time-honored town meeting is the way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Your time's up. Thank you. Mr. Zotos?
You know, we keep talking about this future of a town, someday, we are a great town now. I came home 15 years ago because I loved this town. I was in my dream in Hollywood, and I still miss Southbridge. I came here on vacation every year. In the last four years, I came home in August, not Christmas, and that's when I really fell in love with Southbridge. I just filmed Southbridge Fest last week, and when I got home and looked at the film, the first thing everybody said was, "Look how beautiful downtown looked." Because we were all out there and we were having fun in our town. We've got a gorgeous hospital, everybody. That's better than any factory that we ever had in this town. We are a hospital town, and it's something we should be the most proud of. Then we've got two blocks of commerce, we've got four banks, we've got a beautiful hotel, we've got our own water supply, we've got our own airport, you know? We've got to get our leaders to live here again. And if our leaders don't live here, we should ask them why they don't live here, you know? Because I was in Beverly Hills and I, you know, I didn't like it there anymore. I liked it here because I like to be around people I grew up with, and I like walking down Main Street, and I like going to the library, and I like going down to the hotel and having a nice meal, and I like walking in the woods, and of course, I love fishing and I love playing music. I've done that here for 15 years and I've had the time of my life. This place is great. If you're young, you can go out to Hollywood, you can go to New York and go to Europe. If you're someone like me, this is the place to be. This is the greatest, a small New England town. I love it, I will always love it. I can make it better. Everybody up here can make it better. But you've got to live here. You've got to have an invested interest. So, listen to me. I'm asking for your vote. I really need it. I've been here 15 years and now I know what to do, as you heard tonight. Please vote for me, June 24th, and let's enjoy the town we have, because it is really nice and we can make it better. You know, we used to have 1,000 people on the carmen to hear the bands play. We used to have 5,000 people at the airport on 4th of July. Let's bring back 4th of July. You know, we used to have 5,000 people up there. It used to take two hours for everybody to leave, and I used to film that, too. What happened to 4th of July? What is, what's, what's June 2nd or June 4th, or what is Southbridge Fest? We don't even know what that is. 4th of July, our birthday is in February and it's coming up. We've got to paint this town, we've got to clean it, everybody should fix their house, and let's get ready for our birthday. And let's be proud of Southbridge, because I am all my life. People said, "Hey, Zotos, you're from Southbridge." Yes. Vote for me, June 24th, and I'll show you how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zotos. Mr. Marino?
Thank you. I'm the best candidate because I have the experience. I brought good ideas to the council. I'm independent. I don't belong to cliques. I'm honest. I always fought for the taxpayer. And I think that we have to get spending under control. It's been out of control for too long. I think it's been hurting the community, and it's driving a lot of young families out of Southbridge. And I think we have to stop that and think of the future. I believe in open government, no more back-room deals just for a few counselors. We have to take a close look at the water and sewer contracts, and all the contracts. We are not always going to agree on all the issues, but you know how I stand. I prove that with my support for the Pleasant Street and Worcester Street Citizens Group when other counselors fail them. I can only promise you good government, good, honest government, and open government, and we've got to get back to common sense where we have an open town meeting with the people participating. And I think we have to start maintaining some of our buildings, and what I do miss is the clock at the Central Baptist Church that's been out of order for six or seven years now, okay? And it used to be nice to go to the post office or the bank and you hear the 1 o'clock and the 2 o'clock and the 3 o'clock, okay? That has to be repaired. The town owns that clock, and I think that was repaired about six or seven years ago, but we have to start doing things like that to improve Southbridge and other buildings. So, on June 24th, I think I'm your best candidate, I'm your most honest candidate. I'm a man of my word. You don't always have to agree with me, but you know how I stand. And I listen to the people. I've been a barber for a long time, and it's always given me a good pulse of the feeling of the people. I've had all people from all walks of life, and I've gotten a lot of good ideas for them, and I brought them to the council, like the housing for the elderly that we put out at Dresdor Park. And when we fought the prison, okay, that was a big thing, and I think we saved Southbridge from a bad decision, and that was thanks to the people getting out the vote at a special me, a special election, a meeting. So, I just want to say that I want your vote and appreciate your vote on June 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Mr. Estrada?
Brother, friends, and neighbors, I come to this first from a man of the God, who will not forget what you promised, who will not forget to your promise. And secondly, I come with vision of the future for you and for your home. If you want a better life, vote for Estrada. If you want a better home, if you have better housing, vote for Estrada. If you want better, good idea for much better employee, vote for Estrada. If you want to vote better, fight for equity, vote for Estrada. It depends on the change in the history of the, of the people for better future. For the next generation, don't stay home, people, don't stay home, and come out vote June 24th, for who want to the voice in the city. It's depend, and June 24th, we remember at the day of the people live, he the voice, in a program in the race of the leader of the justice, of the justice social for all. Watch to who was at the back and see who wanted to look at the future. Together, we can be example all neighbor, and the day will become learned from us. June 24th, start the beginning and the change and the history and the town and the city. Come people, I like the work, come people with vision, with people, come very hard, I like hard work for the people. My name is Michael Estrada, your next town council, the voice in the city. Thank you. May God bless you.
Well, thank you very much, candidates. I want to extend my thanks to the Republican and Democratic Town Committee as well. We saw three hours of good debate and good discussion this evening, and a lot of that is done through a great deal of preparation, and it's usually around four hours in the background for every hour that, of what you see. So, my hat's off to them for their continued diligence in trying to bring a very good productive platform to the people to make a good decision. So, thank you, candidates. It was wonderful to be back in my hometown to fellowship with you all tonight. So, best wishes to you all. I'll now turn it over to the Chair of the Republican Town Committee, Mike James, and the Vice Chair of the Democratic Town Committee, Jack Jovan. Thank you.
Thank you, Bush. Thank you very much, Bush. That was excellent job. I hope all of you have been able to get the information that you were looking for. I, too, would like to thank the candidates that have come and participated, the cable access, without them, this would not be possible at all. And on the Democrat's side, too, Gary Fontaine was instrumental, and he's not here tonight, and I want to make sure that he gets his kudos also. And Jack, I think you might have a few words?
Thank you. I always have too many words, they say, at the council meetings sometimes when I speak. But, yes, thank you very much to the Republican Town Committee for partnering again with us, the Democrats in town. I think what you see on the local level is the fact that even though we may have philosophical differences as parties, it's our town, and we believe in it and we want to see the very best. But you are correct, tonight we did see two very good debates. Unfortunately, it's a small sliver of the questions that we had. The Bob, Mike, and Gary put together probably another dozen questions that could have been asked during these two debates. But we have candidates, Mike, that will run for office to fill three slots on both sides where no incumbents really. So, I urge fellow citizens to get out there and vote on the 24th. I really do, I know it's been mentioned, but we need to thank the Cable Access Committee because not only tonight did they bring us this debate, but last night they brought the forum for the town meeting, Town Council, a question that's going to be on the ballot, another very important question. So, Mike, I guess I think you would say this with me as well, and Bob, that it's important that you, the people out in the community, ask questions of these candidates, because you only got a small, small sliver of what their beliefs are, what their issues are in the town, and we really need to vet the candidates to pick the very best for our community. So, thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate it.
And don't forget to vote, June 24th. Thank you.